Good morning, everyone. See, I already failed. The time is now 10:57 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of December 12th, 2017 is called to order. Brian Whiston is not with us today, so the co-presidents of the State Board of Education will chair the meeting in his absence. I'm co-president Cassandra Albridge. I will chair the meeting during the morning session and then co-president Richard Zyley will chair the meeting in the afternoon session. First order of business before I say that is happy birthday to Lupe. We were promised a mariachi band, so we're looking forward to that, Lupe.
The press is going to take care of that.
Okay. All right. The next order of business is approval of the agenda and order of priority. Are there any items to add or delete from the agenda? That comes after.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm reading my script. Are there any items to add or delete from the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Yeah.
The agenda as presented.
All right, so it's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, at this time, Marilyn, would you like to introduce the members of the State Board of Education?
I will. Next to me is Sheila Alice. She is the Michigan Department of Education Chief Deputy Superintendent and she's here as a resource for the co-presidents today. And Richard Zyley, co-president of the board. He resides in Dearborn. Cassandra Albridge, co-president of the board. Michelle Fecto is the board secretary. She lives in Detroit. She is unable to be here today. Nikki Snyder is a board member. And Nikki lives in... Thank you. Dexter. She's unable to be here today. Luke Wilcox, this year's Teacher of the Year. He's a math teacher at East Kentwood High School. When he's not seated at the board table here or going around the country. And across the table, you see Eileen Weiser's name. She's a State Board of Education member from Ann Arbor. She's not able to be here in person, but Eileen's on the phone, right, Eileen?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
All right.
And then seated next in line is Tyler Sawyer. He's with the governor's office. He is the Senior Strategy Advisor for Education and Career Connections. And then Lupe Ramos Montini, the birthday girl, is here from Grand Rapids. She's a board member. Pamela Pugh, board member from Saginaw. And next to me, the board's treasurer, Tom McMillan, from Rochester Hills.
Oakland Township.
Oakland Township. He just moved. And I'm Marilyn Schneider, I'm the State Board Executive.
Thank you. We also go around and we introduce the newest members of the Michigan Department of Education.
Susan, would you like to start?
Sure. It gives me great pleasure and the field was extremely happy that we hired Gina Billings for the Office of Special Ed. Would you please tell the board what your job is and why people were so happy that you were here today?
So I am the Medicaid consultant for the Office of Special Education and I had heard that they were awaiting my arrival. And my job, I work with the Department of Health and Human Services, the interagency agreement.
Vanessa?
Good morning. We have two new employees in my division, so we'll start with Shua Bang, right? Yes. From Office of Field Services.
My name is Shua Bang. I am the financial analyst for the Office of Field Services. And I come from an entrepreneurial background where I have two degrees of finance.
We also have Gina Gardner.
Good morning. I'm Gina Gardner. I'm in the Professional Preparation and Learning Unit. I'm a higher education consultant. I consult for special education programs, administrative preparation programs, and I'm the primary consultant for it. And I come from Aquinas College.
Yay! Aquinas.
Good morning. It's my pleasure to introduce Carrie Fox with the Office of Financial Management.
Hi, I'm Carrie Fox. I'm an executive secretary with financial management and state aided audits. Try to keep them organized and schedule all their meetings. And I transferred over from M.D.
Amy? I'm sorry, she's not here today. I'll introduce her next. Okay. Well, welcome to the department, everyone. Did we miss any new employees in the room?
No.
Okay. Now, the next thing is for our guests to go around and introduce themselves as well, if you like. And Marty, would you like to start?
Hi. I'm Marty Ackley. I'm the Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs here at the Department of Education.
Hello, I'm Stacy Balgag with Michigan Association. Ed Reed, the Director of the Office of Professional Preparation and Services.
Hi, I'm Alicia Flye, Chief Academic Officer for Macomb Intermediate School District.
Karen Slumber, Superintendent of the Calhoun Intermediate School District.
Chris Janzer, Assistant Director in the Office of Educational Assessment and Accountability.
Office of Partnership.
Chris Flaver, Gomor News Service.
Big up Councillor, reporter for MERS News.
Fran Lewis, Facilitator for Michigan Special Education Advisory Committee.
A. Chevallin, Professional Issues Organizer for Michigan Education Association.
Allison Schrewsbury, I work in the Superintendent's Office here at MDE.
Kyle Grahan, Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations.
Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Educators, Students, School Sports. Mrs. Germa, we have the Speaker of the Penon.
Our Call Chief of Staff to the Chief Deputy Superintendent.
After Brian Whiston.
Great. Thank you, everyone. We will have public participation after the lunch period. If you plan to offer public comment at today's meeting, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn. The forms are available on the table just outside of the boardroom and they must be submitted prior to the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. Public comment will begin immediately following lunch break, scheduled at approximately 1:00 PM today, so please be here at that time to make sure you have the opportunity to submit comments. The first item on the committee of the whole agenda is a presentation on transparency dashboard updates. This presentation covers several updates related to work on the Every Student Succeeds Act transparency dashboard, including a general status update. We get these updates on a monthly basis. So presenting will be Vanessa Kiesler and Chris Janzer from the Office of Education Assessment and Accountability.
Good morning. And like Cassandra's introduction said, this is our monthly update on our progress. So I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Chris right away.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for being here on the cold and icy morning. All right, so let's hop right into it. I'm going to talk mainly today about the big parent survey that closed at the end of last month. But before we get into that, I'll talk a little bit about where we are with the project schedule. So we are actually finishing up the build process and we are moving into the acceptance testing. Everything is pretty much on schedule. We're eagerly anticipating having it open for preview in a couple of weeks, I think it is, and doing the unveiling here January 9th. Things are coming along, things are looking really good. We are, I'm trying to think, well, I'll get into it. So, parent advisory group, we have, the last advisory group is actually happening right now down on the second floor. They are going over sort of the expected final features of our initial rollout and then they will be providing input on some enhancements that we've talked about here at the monthly updates as well. Specifically, I believe today, they're talking a little bit more about the school comparison piece and how we'll build that out further. I believe they're also going over survey results and doing sort of last minute feedback on how we're calling things, terminology, that sort of stuff. And then they'll provide some feedback on how they've experienced their advisory group meetings over the last, it's been four or five months. And hopefully we'll continue that for future phases. All right, so the parent survey, we had opened it back at the end of October. Originally, it was scheduled to be open for a couple of weeks. We extended that to reach out to more parents and to get more responses. We ended up with over 4,200 responses, so pretty good there. And it will be used to inform terminology, which we have sort of baked into this initial release, as well as talk about some things coming up in the pipeline. The outreach for the parent survey, the communications team worked on a wide variety of different things. We had a press release. They provided sample social media messages for people to use. We had an item in our S.A. newsletter, as well as emails from the department and a flyer. The department outreach targeted sort of the normal reach of ISD people, principals and superintendents in our districts, as well as charter schools and library contacts. We leaned a bit on our parent advisory group to help, you know, leverage their contacts as well. And I believe public policy associates did a little bit of work with different community groups as well. So as far as demographics go for our survey, we had almost every Michigan county represented, 77 out of the 83. Not quite 20% of our respondents had a child with an IEP. Almost 10% had a, spoke a language other than English at home. And we actually had quite a fair number with children attending school outside of the home district, so school of choice or charter. We also had a bit over a third of the respondents work in some sort of educated, education-related profession, so whether that was a local school district. I think we also had colleges and universities, so it wasn't just K-12, it was other stuff beyond that. As far as race and ethnicity goes, the majority was white. We did have an okay representation in other ethnic groups. We also had about 10% that preferred not to answer that. Okay, so let's get into sort of what the survey was asking about. We wanted to know, and this, it sort of followed some of the focus group stuff that we did back in September and October. So we were interested in where parents were currently getting their information about schools from. We had over half indicate that they have used MySchool data in the past. And we do have a breakout here because we did have about a third of our respondents work in an educational setting, so we were interested to see sort of the breakout there. Not surprisingly, parents that worked in an educational setting typically did use MySchool data more than those that didn't. Probably just more awareness in the education world there. We had over half also use some sort of district source, whether that was a website, a district newsletters, their social media, or talking to a staff person. Also not surprisingly, parents talked to other parents. We had about 40% indicate that they got information from other parents as a source. And sort of going down the line, sort of surprisingly, too, 10% indicated a real estate agent where they got educational information from, so that is there. We asked what they would use a dashboard for. Again, not, nothing too surprising here. This sort of goes along with what we've heard already in our focus groups, but comparing performance between similar schools wasn't always indicated as something they would use this dashboard for by almost two-thirds of our respondents. Just learning about how their child's school is doing overall, again, over half. And then sort of rounding out towards the bottom there, finding information about how students like their child are served at a school, about 30%, so that might be parents with an English learner student or a student with disability, that sort of a thing. Talked a little bit about trying to glean information on how parents see different topics. And I think I talked about this at a prior board meeting, but we wanted to further test some of our terminology. So one of the things that is very, a very sort of common term in reporting right now is student mobility. That's where a student will come into and out of a building within a school year. And we had a couple of different choices out there, but by far, student transfers made the most sense to our parents. I don't have the breakout here between parents that worked in an education setting and those that didn't, but again, not surprisingly, those that are more familiar with the terminology did, they were more understanding of sort of what we already use. And that might just be because they have gotten used to seeing things a certain way on MySchool data. So we are, so we are calling it student transfers, if you guys were wondering that. We will be calling student mobility that. Chronic absenteeism was another one, which is going to be a little bit of a challenge because we are showing both chronic absenteeism on the dashboard as well as average attendance. So we're going to have to tease out that. Currently, we're going to call chronic absences on-track attendance, and that's because it's, we're taking the inverse of that, so it's students not chronically absent. So we're saying, well, those students have on-track attendance. And then student attendance will refer to the traditional sort of measure of average The other one that was, and I do have the breakout here, the support titles gets at employees within a school that support students. They're not necessarily instructional staff, but think of them as like a guidance counselor or a school nurse. There, too, we had a couple of different options. Support staff was favored by parents that were not working in an educational setting and those that were, preferred the more detailed, non-instructional support staff. I believe we're going with just support staff. I could be wrong there. Yes?
Some support staff works directly for the adults. Others work with kids. Seems to me there is some legal ramifications to whether you're responsible for supervising kids or not. Is there some, I don't know, rule of thumb or, or classification of support staff, those that work with kids versus those that do something else?
I know for this metric on the dashboard, the intent was to show support staff that was working with kids in some way. So it is, it is less of the, the front office administrative staff, and it's more those that have some impact on students.
So an IT guy would be support staff, but not a non-instructional support staff?
Um, no. And this is kind of where we get in a challenge with the terminology where it's, because you could say, well, everyone that's not instructing students is sort of supporting the mission of the, the building. No. So it's, it's more guidance counselors, school nurses. I'm trying to think who, who else we would have.
Is custodial staff included in here?
It would not, no, they would not be.
Paraprofessionals in that?
I believe so.
Okay.
I, I haven't looked at the business rules in a while, but I know that was a distinction that we had to make.
I know one of the criticisms of some of the urban schools has been, you know, the lack of upkeep and, and, you know, if you're trying to cut, save costs by cutting back on custodial staff, that is going to affect your educational environment, so.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking aloud here, I don't.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with, but I'm just trying to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, so certainly sort of highlights the challenge on trying to boil something down into a, a single word.
Yeah.
Term to describe something. And then going on, post, so post-secondary enrollment, the word post-secondary in general posed some misunderstanding or just lack of knowledge with parents. So it's more that than like enrollment or post-secondary completion. So parents preferred the enrollment in, and then we have college or trade school after high school, just being more specific about that. What, what does post-secondary mean? We also tested again, so this kind of gets into the business rules a little bit as to how the metric will be displayed. Currently, SEPI collects data on sort of different times after high school graduation for when a student enrolls in a post-secondary option. And you'll see there, it's pretty split between six and 12 months. We actually had to, in order to get the dashboard developed in time for January, we had to go with something earlier. So we actually chose 12 months, maybe a month ago now. So it's sort of nice to see the reinforcement there, that we are on the right track. Post-secondary completion was another one where we had to take a guess at what parents would think. And this, again, gets to where we were going. We, we actually went with six years, which is not exactly where the majority went with. But again, we're sort of in that four, five, six-year range that most thought was best. And this post-secondary completion is for students that are in either a two-year or four-year college, so the six sort of handles all of that. We're also, so we're, we're sort of in the, part of the project schedule, too, where we're really trying to anticipate the support piece of this. So I was really interested to see the results for this question. So we are interested in if a parent had a question on the dashboard, where would they go first? By and large, they would use the tools in the dashboard already, so that's the Frequently Asked Questions tab, and then the Contact Us tab on the dashboard. So those are two big chunks. A little surprisingly, and this goes a little bit against what we heard in our focus group and advisory group, was that they would talk to the school, where we only had 9.6% indicate that they would talk to the, or reach out to the school principal or teacher if they had a question on the dashboard. And remember, we will have contact information for whatever building the user is looking at there, so that is still available, even though our survey results have indicated that that might not be used as much as what we had originally hoped. Department of Ed is fairly low there, and that's, I think, expected. We just haven't traditionally had that role, although we are preparing lots of resources to use for, for schools to use for supporting parents, and I believe our communications team will also have a resource spot on the MDE website for parents to go to as well.
Chris?
Yes?
We talked about videos. Is there going to be a video or two?
Yeah. So we'll have a, the superintendent will hopefully be doing a welcome video as far as more support-type videos, so.
Did you tape somebody?
Yes, we are working on, there's a, there's software called Camtasia, which basically takes a video of your screen as you are doing something. So we are planning that. I'm not sure if that'll be out for the initial release. If not, it would be soon after. I know our partners at SEPI were working on it, and I'm not sure the...
I'll use it, too.
Yeah, it's not, yeah. So it's, that is part of the plan. I just don't know if it's going to be there on the 9th or shortly after. No. All right, similar schools. So this gets at sort of the comparison piece, which if you remember from a few slides ago, we had about two-thirds of parents that would use a dashboard to make some sort of comparison. And remember, we initially are doing comparisons based on a average of up to 30 similar schools, and the similarities will be based on either distance or demographics, and then the parent can toggle between those two. Parents were, they were pretty ambivalent as to what they would prefer. They said they would use both over, versus one or the other, or not making comparisons. Actually, only 3.4% of parents said they wouldn't make comparisons using what we have now. And yeah, that last bullet really gets at the, so over 80% of parents were either very likely or somewhat likely to compare, this gets at the head-to-head comparison. So that, and that is something that we're actually testing right now in the advisory group, which will roll out hopefully late winter, early spring, depending on how analytic, I guess, it gets. I'll, I'll leave it at that. But there's, sometimes it's, the details are challenging to work out with it. But as you can see, parents are very interested in, in using us to make comparisons. Okay, so let's get into a little bit of the visual stuff. And I can't remember if we had settled on this name at the November meeting or not. I've been calling it transparency dashboard or parent dashboard. Working through the communications team, and then we did test this with our advisory group last month, they came up with a parent dashboard for school transparency. It sort of covers all of the bases that we want. It's a bit long, in my opinion, but it works. We also changed the tagline underneath, so the Your Window to Important School Information and Facts is also a change from what we had before. So that will be what everyone sees on the night. Mentioned, the superintendent will be doing a little welcome video, and that's, we'll have a link embedded on the landing page there, where parents will be able to click on the link. And Superintendent Whiston will, it'll be a nice welcome message. He won't get very detailed. I think it will be a couple of minutes long, but it's something that we actually have seen in a couple of other states do as well. I think this is my last visual thing. So the, the search has been really exciting from a technical standpoint. This is something that MySchool data does right now okay. What we've been pushing for the dashboard really enhances that existing search. So you might remember me talking about a text search that does a, an autocomplete based on what you're typing and all of that. So that's part of that. That's new to MySchool data and obviously new to the dashboard. The map search capability, we've been working with the Center for Shared Solutions. It's a, it's an office within a, within the Department of Technology Management and Budget. They've been phenomenal to work with. I've played around a little bit with the preliminary version of it. Basically, you can zoom in anywhere on a state, and once you zoom in far enough, you'll see all of those little red pins start to show up where a building is located. I've actually clicked on Eastern High School here in Lansing, and this example pops up with the, the school's name, and then there'll be a little button there where you can click and get a little bit more info, and that'll take you then to the school's dashboard. So it's, it's pretty slick. So communications plans, then. So ongoing, so we closed up the survey and we are holding our final parent advisory group today. Last week, we sent out a, an announcement to schools and districts saying, hey, we're going to have this open in preview at the end of December. I think that's running this week again as well. Communications team is working on finalizing all of their communications tools, and they've got all the bases covered. They've got sample social media pieces. They've got PowerPoints that schools and districts can use at their local board meetings, where they can basically plug in their dashboard info. And then we've got stock slides that sort of explain the purpose and the intent of the dashboard. That's all going great. I believe we're developing a, a little button or badge that districts can put on their own websites that will link to MySchool data and the dashboard, sort of like the, the financial transparency reporting that they all have on their websites now. And then January 9th is the big day. We'll launch it here at the State Board of Ed meeting. And with that, there'll be a whole slew of announcements to schools and the media. I think that is all I have. Did I?
I think that's everything. We're close to the finish.
We're close to the finish line. The team's pushing hard and really, really putting a lot of effort into this. And we look forward to the January 9th launch. Invite your friends, grab cake. So dashboard cake. Chris wanted to have his face on the cake, but I said no, we needed to have the dashboard.
Yeah.
But we will be celebrating the launch of the dashboard at the meeting in January. So we're looking forward to it.
And we're hoping to have, we're inviting everyone that's sort of worked on this to the meeting. So we might have a packed room and we might not. I mean, a lot of these people are behind-the-scenes people, but yeah.
Yep. Questions?
Oh, did you want to go first? So this is exciting. Of course, I still have concerns with the demographics and the low number of customers of certain populations that we really want to know if they can access and be able to understand this information. So my question is, do we have some sort of CQI, or Continuous Quality Improvement, that's built in? One of the words, you know, I keep hearing "parents," but in some cultures, "grandparents." That's a big concern of, of mine. When I think about my dad, who plays a huge role and is educated as he is, you know, how does this, this work for him? But in certain populations, you know, we get grandparents, and how do we continue to get their input? And then be able to address that input in the system?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things. One is, we're hoping to continue the parent work that we've done, so either focus groups or surveys, or like an advisory group. And then hopefully with that, we'll be able to sort of take what we've learned with this sort of first round of that, and be able to target those that haven't necessarily had as big of, or as loud of a voice as what we've had in this first round. Second thing, with the launch, we are anticipating having a feedback survey on the dashboard. So as people start using it, we're hoping that they take the couple of minutes to fill out, is this serving your needs, is it not? And it's, it's, my understanding is it'll be more general questions than specific. So like, we won't be asking terminology questions. We'll be asking, were you able to use it to find what you were looking for, or that sort of stuff? So...
And that's good to hear. But when we first started, there were some groups that I asked that we physically reach out to and not expect them to come through the electronic survey. So I'm hoping that, that we're able to incorporate that. We might need to still go some places or set up, you know, the, the contact people there that are able to bring certain populations in to help them walk through this. Because them going to the computer and doing the survey, I don't know that we can expect that. But there are people who will want to get information from this tool. I mean, give feedback. We'll want to get that.
Yep. And we, we did some of that in the focus groups. You're absolutely right, we can do more. And as we launch it, we have a tool that we can sit people down with. There's actually ways to do user testing with the interactive dashboard. But I will put an early plug. If you know people, we have really appreciated the support of the Kellogg Foundation to help us with this outreach work, and Public Policy Associates helping us do it. That funding is coming to an end, so we'll, we probably need to look for other sources. This isn't capacity that, I don't even know if it's capacity we should have in the department. You know, it's, it's probably, there's probably other people who do it better, right? So, but we need some, we need some partners. So if anybody knows anybody who would like to partner with us in this work, that would be, we're going to be looking for that.
And as you use that term "partners," we're working with the partnership districts. We probably should identify groups within those partnership districts that can help the groups that are not necessarily represented in, in the feedback.
That just triggers for me, too. We can, we could do usability testing just through the partnership district networks. So, right there, if we made sure those 16 districts really knew how to use it, that'd be a place to start, and then we could build from there. So thank you for that idea.
Yeah, I too am very excited about this. I'm wondering how dynamic the platform is as far as change, because I know that we're, we've gotten here, and I know that we don't want to change things every day. I don't know if it's going to be done monthly or quarterly. But I would imagine that there'll be some schools that say, wait a minute, this isn't exactly the right either data, or this doesn't portray us accurately. I think we had talked maybe about, and again, I don't know how dynamic or how quickly we could get to this, but I'd, I'd like for the opportunity for a school to be able to explain. I don't know how you do that, but you know, if a number looks a little odd that they could press a button and a video pops up with a, you know, the math teacher or somebody saying, you know, this is a challenge, I don't know, just something, I, I think that this is going to go in many different directions. It could be exciting. I mean, I think it's going to be more information. Hopefully, it'll be presented well. It could be a lot of different changes, and I'm just wondering how we're going to make sure that we do it thoughtfully, that we, you know, make sure that we know how it's going to impact, you know, the, the next release or...
Sure.
So I just am kind of curious about that. As far as the video... So I do think that how to do this, I mean, I, you can also do a desktop with a Skype. So somebody, basically, you can see their, this is Chris, you know, my name's Chris and I'm a parent, and this is what I wanted to find out. And then they could walk through the desktop as they're clicking through some things slowly, and kind of explaining, you know, that these are how I found out this information. I also think, I mean, this might be an opportunity to engage either S State Board members to see if parent groups want us to come out and give a little hour, you know, half-hour seminar on how to use the dashboard. I'm hoping it'll be, you know, somebody right there with you, but I, I also would imagine that might not be a bad thing as well. And then finally, we had talked a little bit about points of pride. Is that, is that going to come later, or is there going to be any opportunities for, again, I think schools will start saying, wow, this is a cool way to portray. I mean, we have, I'd like for them to have an opportunity to portray their school, not just with the data, it's obviously important, but while you're comparing us, this is some things that we're really excited about, that I think is unique.
Yeah, so...
A lot of questions there.
With the points of pride, there are, I think, four or five metrics that we had planned on, where they are sort of points of pride metrics, so sort of extracurricular offerings, that sort of stuff. Those, we are planning on doing data collection for this spring, and those will be like phase two metrics. So when I, when we originally had thought about pushing things out to the dashboard, I think we were thinking more of a less frequent, once-a-year thing. But as we've sort of gone through the, this project, that thinking has evolved to, as things become available, we'll push them out. So it is, it'll be more of a, a living report than, hey, log in once a year and check your thing out. So the, I would anticipate the points of pride stuff, where we already have those metrics defined, would come out sometime, you know, summer, fall of '18. I think we need to think a little bit more about what you're sort of getting at with the local picture and sort of how to, we, and we, we talked about this a few weeks ago with the, you know, leveraging the, so we'll display like a school's website on the dashboard, but maybe that evolves to something where they might have a specific points of pride page that we could link to, so that we're not actually collecting various things that schools want to talk about. And it's more of a, hey, for more local information, check this link out, or something like that. So I think that gets at what you were talking about.
Yeah, I think we want to keep exploring options to let districts tell their story around the data. Right now, it's, what we have done, and I, this goes to your point about the engaging the State Board on dashboard, I wrote down dashboard tutorials. I like that idea. The communications team has made, that's what Chris highlighted it, but they have made a suite of resources that'll make it easy for any of you to go talk about this. Just pick up the slides, pick up the demonstrations and go. And we would love that. I think that's actually where it'll get reach, and that's why the communications team has done a great job thinking about how do we equip everybody to talk about this, so it's not, I have to put a slide together, I have to remember the details, or what did Chris say about points of pride? You know, it's all together, so you guys can use it to, to, or anybody can use it. But we would love the State Board to be champions of the dashboard. And I think, too, that's, as we're doing those, and districts and schools say, well, you know, if we could have done this, or we'd like this information, then we can be targeted in what we build. And thinking about the, like Chris said, the balance of what do we collect here versus let them host themselves? If we collect it, then we have to check it and they have to update it, you know? Or are there technology solutions where they can, like you're saying, record? I don't know. If not, then like, what else can we do? But we'd like to be kind of user-responsive to that, because we have built this for parents. We haven't talked as much to the school and district leaders about how are you going to use it? So I think that's, that's in phase two and three, to understand that and figure out what we do. So we're, we're looking at it. We don't have a firm, firm answer around that yet, but we want to build something that makes the most sense and is the best use of resources, too.
And then to get at the question about how dynamic the site is, one of the things that we've done is, so we've, we've anticipated that on the initial rollout, we probably won't cover every single question that people will have about it. So we've built, we've, the FAQ page is dynamic in the sense where we can actually go in and add things, edit things on the fly, which will, the old process was, so like, sort of a static page where we would have to go through a committee, and then it gets passed off to the developer. And so that's like a weeks-long process. Our hope is with a, an editable support page, that that gets down to a couple of days. So if we didn't anticipate, oh, people don't know what this attendance rate is all about, we can update that on the, more on the fly than what we have in the past. So there is that kind of thing built into it.
Other questions?
Just along those lines, have you thought about some sort of CQI? Or...
The Continuous Quality Improvement process?
Yeah.
So when I hear you say that, what I think you mean, or what we're doing, is this kind of continuously, what are we learning? What do we want to update and get it into the work queue? And knowing that this will be a living site, like Chris said, it's not a, once a year, we dust off the dashboard and see what we need to do to it, but more of an ongoing, and watching the user metrics. Chris explained yesterday at our leadership meeting, some different, we don't need to go into it, but some different metrics about how far are people scrolling, and how many people are using it, and how are things working? So watching those usability metrics, and if a function isn't working, then yeah, fix it right away. So I think this, out of many of the technology-based products we put forward, this one has a lot more thought to that ongoing, continuous improvement, as opposed to, we always engage in a, when it's time to do the next collection, we sit down and say, what worked well, what worked poorly? This is a lot, a lot more organic, I think.
And be real thoughtful in what a team of people that would feed that information.
Yeah, the State also has a, I've heard the State has a usability technology lab. So, so it's where actually people will go in and sit at a computer, basically, and then are observed using the site, and there's all sorts of measurements taken, like, how quickly do they get to what they're looking for and all of that? And we'd, I would like to, I'm very interested in sort of using that to see, sort of post-release, okay, what did we get right, what didn't we get right? And, you know, how do we enhance it for the user? So...
Anything else?
Yes, it's Eileen.
Lupe, and then Eileen, and then myself.
Okay. Well, what I want to say is that this is a product of, to me, a genius. You did a tremendous job with the idea, and I think the parents are going to be able to assess the, the information. And, and as Pam was concerned about, and I have been concerned all along, but I'll, I want to be part of the solution. If I can help in the Grand Rapids, greater Grand Rapids area, you know, I'd be more than happy to. I, I can see me going to, we have like five radio stations, Hispanic, Spanish-speaking radio stations in Grand Rapids, and it's many newspapers. So this could be something that we could highlight.
Great idea.
And start introducing it to, to that community. And so when this document comes out, they will understand what it's all about.
Great, thank you.
Eileen?
On that note, I second what Pam and Lupe are both saying, which is, the real issue here is that now we have a product that's a result of a lot of hard work and as much exploration as anybody could leverage. So the question is, how do we get it into the hands of people who could use it to improve their child schooling? And to that, and also, I would say, as clunky as the title may be, the Parent Dashboard for School Transparency, there are three searchable terms there that should yield access to the site. And I think that we just need to commend them for trying to figure out how to get to it. Even though, yes, I agree, it's not the most elegant title in the universe.
Thanks, Eileen. And I, I do want to mention...
To the staff, too, for all of this. It was great.
Thank you. And I do want to mention, you know, we did have a lot of discussion about the use of the word "parent." We, we did. We went back and forth on caregiver, or adult, or, you know, all these other terms that are more appropriate for the breadth of support formations that our students experience. We stuck with parent at the start. We tested it with the advisory group, and because we'd said it was a parent dashboard, knowing that parent isn't always the most accurate term for the adults' and children's lives, but not wanting it to be, you know, the parent and guardian and caregiver dashboard for school transparency. But we are open, if that, if, if that's cutting people out, if people won't go to it because they think I'm not a parent, you know, we, we can keep talking. But I just want, we want you to know that we considered that, and we are aware that that is a, not the most inclusive term for all of the ways that our students have their home lives. So...
Yeah. And that was going to be my point as well, just that it feels limiting to have parent, because honestly, it's, you know, it's taxpayers, it's voters, it's, everybody should have ownership over this dashboard, not just a segment of the population. So, but at, at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's going to be what it's going to be.
Right. And I think in this first iteration, we did focus a lot on parents, not on taxpayers and voters and admin. You know, that was the charge from the board, is get something that parents can use, parents and caregivers. I think you're right, though, Cassandra, that we need to keep talking about, at some point, do we drop parent and just put school dashboard for transparency, or something that's more accessible?
Or just dashboard.
Or just dashboard. Or maybe as the branding improves, people will know it's there and we don't need to. So let's just all put a pin in that as something to keep watching, but do know that we weighed all of that out to meet the charge we were given, but also to be reflective of what we want it to be in the future.
Okay.
Well, you know, one, one thought. I thought about the same thing, parent, just parent. But then I started writing grandparents, foster parents. And, and in my world, everybody's an educational parent, whether you're a taxpayer, business owner, whatever you are, everybody is an educational parent to the students. So, yeah, but let's keep working on a more inclusive term, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is a presentation of the documentary on State of Teacher Preparation: Research and Stories from Early Years in the Classroom. This documentary follows three novice teachers in metro Detroit as they face the challenges and triumphs of the education profession. Their experiences draw parallels to current research on preparing and supporting new teachers, including the importance of quality preparation, clinical experience, and ongoing mentorship. It also features veteran teachers, school leaders, researchers, and leaders from teacher preparation programs and the Michigan Department of Education, who discuss evidence-based best practices for new teacher preparation and support, as well as ideas for continued improvement. It was produced by Detroit Public Television in partnership with the Regional Educational Laboratory Midwest and its Midwest Alliance to Improve Teacher Preparation. And so Leah Breen, Director of Office of Professional Preparation Services, will kick this off.
Hello. Thank you, everybody, for your time here. It's my pleasure to be able to share this with you. I was actually able to be present at the initial screening and release of this documentary, along with some of the individuals represented in the video, some other teachers, community members, and professors. And it was very exciting work. We were talking about partners early at the table. We've been lucky enough to have REL as a great partner. We have a five-year research plan with them in support of improving our teacher preparation programs aligned to the Top 10 and 10 initiatives. And this is one of the products of our partnership with them. I'd like to briefly introduce Dr. or Mr. Rich Homberg, who is the CEO of Detroit Public Television, who came here today, in case you have any questions or comments for him afterwards, and Dr. Lewis, who is represented in the video as well. Okay. Go ahead and get it started.
State of Teacher Preparation: Research and Stories from Early Years in the Classroom is a co-production of Regional Educational Laboratory Midwest and Detroit Public Television, with funding provided by REL Midwest, through funds provided by the U.S. Department of Education's Institute of Education Sciences.
Learning to teach is always about learning to teach something. You can't grow if you don't know what you're doing wrong.
What is good teaching? How would we know it if we saw it? And that's pushed back on teacher preparation. So now people are thinking deeply about this, and they're coming together more to sort So now people are thinking deeply about this, and they're coming together more to sort of see if they can agree.
I wanted to become a teacher because I love making things interesting.
I love my kids. I see them growing, I see them changing, and it's amazing.
I love children, and I think that I've had some very inspiring teachers when I was growing up. I just always had that passion to become a teacher, and it just stuck with me.
We sat down with three novice teachers in metro Detroit. Their experiences draw parallels to current research on preparing and supporting new teachers. Specifically, the importance of quality preparation, including clinical experience and ongoing mentorship. We also spoke to veteran teachers, school leaders, researchers, and leaders from teacher preparation programs and the Michigan Department of Education, about evidence-based best practices for new teacher preparation and support in Michigan and nationally, as well as ideas for continued improvement.
I went to Detroit Public Schools growing up. I see the needs here now, and I feel like there's no other place that I belong, other than teaching in Detroit.
Tiffany Ward started her education career as a paraprofessional in 2014 at Highland Park Renaissance Academy. She is still at the same school, but this is now her first year as a certified teacher.
There's plenty of evidence that clinical experience matters, but it's not a matter of just many hours. There are some features of it that make it more powerful.
Clinical experience is the experience one gains while working in the field, such as in an internship or through student teaching. An effort to get the specific clinical experience needed to be a successful novice teacher in Detroit, Tiffany enrolled in Teach Detroit, the teacher residency program offered through Wayne State University.
The idea was to create a program that would train people especially to work in Detroit schools, and that would also build on the strengths of the city. From the very first day, our students are in a school with children, and they'll rehearse an activity, and then they go in and for 20 minutes will work with children.
Training in a context, and then having your first job in the same kind of situation, you are going to be a better teacher, and that evidence is pretty strong. It's even stronger if you train in a particular school and end up getting hired there.
I did my student teaching at a Detroit Public School, Malcolm X Paul Robertson Academy, and then I closed it out here at Highland Park Renaissance Academy, teaching summer school.
14. Can you make a 10?
We looked a lot at how doctors are trained. Those novices are in with more seasoned professionals very early on.
You have 10, and then you have, how many little boxes do you have?
Three.
And they teach for half an hour every day in the beginning. Then we start increasing that, and we allow teachers to teach for longer and bigger groups. Also looked at the way athletes train, and that's how we got to the videotaping. Turns out, athletes are videotaped frequently and get critique on their videos, and actually helps them learn and grow.
One of the top concerns for Tiffany is a novice teacher's classroom management, especially since she teaches very young students. She relies on her peers and mentors at Teach Detroit to help her plan her own management strategies.
Kindergarten is a hard grade in itself. It's not just always about teaching ABCs and 1-2-3s. A lot of the kids have never been to school before. I think that was difficult in the beginning, just because she was new and they were new.
What comes after five if you're counting by 10?
It's different every single day.
All right, Ian, your thing's up.
They're full of a lot of emotions, and so sometimes when you first walk in the door, it's a lot of, what went on this morning, or what went on last night? Do you need a hug? How are you feeling? Did you eat breakfast? I get to see the Teach Detroit students that's been in the program with me, and some of the new Teach Detroit students, and so we get to share our experiences and really talk about how it's been going for our first year of teaching, and I think a lot of us are having, you know, those same struggles with classroom management. The director of the program, Dr. Lewis, she's been giving us advice. It's normal. It's normal for a first-year teacher to have some classroom management issues, and even after 10 years of teaching, you're going to still have some things that you struggle with. You have to leave space. See how there's space in this one there?
The very first thing you need, it comes up again and again in surveys, teachers say, classroom management, understanding how to manage children.
Next time, write your answers right below, okay, because you want to line them up.
It's about things like setting classroom norms on day one, telling people what's expected of them, giving them good instructions, learning how to hand out papers, learning how to use the board.
Eyes on the smart board.
Eyes on the smart board.
How to use your voice. It's a performance.
Lots of first-year teachers leave the profession, lots more leave by year three, and large part, it's because they feel that they are not up to the task, the work is overwhelming, they feel that they're ineffective, and it was found that good mentorship made a real difference. While our students are in our program, taking courses and going through these clinical experiences with us, they have mentors, but when they graduate, we actually provide what we call induction mentors for the first two years.
We offer a lot of support for our new teachers, because our instructional coach pretty much works one-on-one with all of the teachers, and we're able to really see how much support each individual teacher needs. We have PLC meetings, weekly, which is professional learning community. The teachers are able to meet with one another at least once a week to discuss whatever is pressing that week.
I applied to Novi twice throughout the summer. The first time was for a middle school position that they found somebody else for. The second one was a high school position. Once I got the call, it was, every kind of resource that I had was completely invested into this school.
Dominic Gliss, like Tiffany, is a novice teacher. He is a science instructor at Novi High School and completed his teacher preparation at Michigan State University.
The teacher prep program at Michigan State has us in classrooms, starting our first year in it. I went to three different schools for my service learning, and then after we graduate our senior year, you get your degree in your field, and then you progress to your internship year.
In the internship, they are placed in a classroom four or five days a week, and then on the fifth day, they come back to campus to take graduate-level classes. That allows really a much longer time for learning to teach, and a kind of a back-and-forth between learning about ideas, trying them out in practice, coming back and reflecting.
There are plenty of students or pre-service teachers who, when they enter this classroom, or as a new teacher, the only preparation they've had is a 12-week internship. That is their only classroom experience. When we interview candidates, it becomes very obvious about who's actually had experience, and some of the people we're interviewing have been classroom teachers, and obviously they have a huge advantage, because they can speak from classroom experience.
Even though Dominic and Tiffany teach in two very different school districts, their needs are similar, and include clinical experience as pre-service teachers. Like Tiffany, Dominic also benefits greatly from an onsite mentor, Emily Polansky.
I mentor new teachers in their first couple of years here at Novi, and I think the type of mentor I am with each of those individuals is different. With new teacher, it's a lot more directed. There's some really specific things that I want to make sure that they know how to do and can do.
Emily's been through so many different types of training, I mean, just unit planning and assessment writing, all of these things, and since she's a great teacher herself, she can just give us that information.
And she models the behavior that we would want to see out of new teachers like Dominic. We have mentors that are assigned to all new teachers, so each one is paired up with someone who has been, you know, in the field for four to five years minimally, and if they don't have a mentor, I would be really concerned and apprehensive as to whether or not that person would be able to be sustainable. Research shows that getting good feedback from a good mentor teacher is powerful. Because, you know, when you're in the moment, you can't see it yourself, but having someone observe you, that kind of feedback is very powerful. There are some things that new teachers need, right? They need time. They need to have come in with some content and pedagogy background, and then have spaces and opportunities to try new things, and to be able to learn from those things, and to realize that not everything is going to be successful the first time.
I do not expect them to be the best that they're ever going to be, but I expect that they have what it takes to make sure I would feel okay putting my kid in that room. After that, I expect them to have an attitude that indicates that they get that they're not the best that they're ever going to be, and that they want to grow with us. Feedback is so important, that it's actually part of the superintendent's Top 10 and 10 initiative. His goal is to be the top 10 state in 10 years. I think it's the single most beneficial way in which a teacher can be supported, is have somebody that's able to give critical feedback, and also be a partner with somebody else as a mentor, and share feedback with them.
Blue and yellow, what color?
Green. Green?
I've always had an aptitude for children, and people always told me I should be a teacher.
Imani Sims comes from a teaching family, and attended private and charter schools while growing up in Detroit. She is a former Teach for America Corps member, and is finishing up her second year as a kindergarten teacher at Munger, a K-8 Detroit Public School. During her first year, she did not have any significant mentorship.
There is no formal mentorship program within Detroit Public Schools, which, quite honestly, I wish there was one, because I was so lost last year. The biggest thing, I guess, is that Ms. Briegel came in. When I first met her, she was just full of life.
Today, we're going to talk about things that are as big as a fire truck.
And was very much like, hey, this is what I'm doing, this is what I'm doing, this is what I'm doing, this is who I am as a person, I really enjoy helping people.
Fortunately, one experienced Detroit educator took the initiative to change the situation for Imani by serving as an informal mentor to her.
The very first day of school, we met each other. We have adjoining classrooms. I took this teach, this classroom over from a teacher that was retiring. So I went through the first seven years of my career without a mentor, not only without a mentor, but without a evaluation by an administrator. So I had no feedback on my teaching whatsoever, as far as having a mentor, being assigned a mentor, that didn't happen in my career, ever, ever, until I, 13 years in, went to national board certification, and that's when I first discovered what a mentor was, someone who helps you through the process, someone who helped you reflect and think about teaching, and that's when I think it clicked for me, that this is a key element in this career.
I saw older teachers asking her for help, and I didn't feel like some dumb young kid asking her for help, because like, other people, she, A, she offered, B, she was all about teamwork, C, she seemed to be okay with a reciprocal relationship.
The mentor has to want to mentor as much as the mentee wants to have the mentoring. I don't have to worry as much about what I'm doing myself in the classroom. I can now share that skill and knowledge. It's taken 20-plus years, but I feel that I've gotten there.
It was really nice to have Ms. Briegel, especially because like, our doors are, like, I can literally walk into her room from my room, and she can walk into mine and just say, hey, just checking in on you, where I can say, hey, I don't know what's going on, please help me. There's something about feeling like you're alone, or maybe you're doing everything wrong and you don't know, because there's nothing to compare to.
Like Tiffany, Imani deals with classroom management issues while teaching kindergartners. And also like Tiffany, Imani learned from her mentor that what she is dealing with is not uncommon.
It was rough. It's tough to be in charge of 25 kids and manage all those multiple behaviors when still in, yet learning what I'm craft, and what I need to know how to do and what to It's the management that has to really be done onsite. It's not something you can read in a book. You just have to do it. You have to be part of it, and it's a learning process.
Through wise mentorship, the learning process can be accelerated for new teachers. But again, Ms. Briegel is just an informal mentor, who is there for Imani only because of circumstance.
Four years ago in Detroit Public Schools, I oversaw a first-year teacher mentoring program. To this day, those teachers will contact me via email, or see me at a workshop now, and thank me for the little things that they learned. Detroit, we need to get back to that. We need to get back to specific trainings just for them.
One of the most daunting challenges in education today is the recruitment and retention of new teachers.
One of the interesting things going on in teacher prep right now is that enrollment's down across the board, in every kind of program, in every place. There was a survey done by a group called Third Way in Washington, and they surveyed the top 50% of graduates of universities, and they asked them their perceptions of the teaching profession. Is this something they wanted to do? Is teaching an easy major? Is it a well-respected thing? Does it pay well? And it was all negative.
While problems with recruitment and retention of new teachers might be caused by a variety of issues, pay is one reason that consistently came up in our interviews.
Probably one of the most phenomenal teachers I've seen in years. I mentored last year, and she left in October this year. I don't blame her. Wonderful for her, I think it was great, but it broke my heart, because the kids need great teachers like that. How do we keep them? Pay might be one way.
I'm a science teacher by day, and by night, I'm a football coach, a spring athletic aide, and a cook. I'm 25 years old, I have a lot of energy. I don't know how many years I can do, working three jobs. It's tough.
Quite honestly, if I were to get married and start a family, and my salary didn't raise, I wouldn't be a teacher anymore, even though I love it, even though it makes me so happy, I could not afford it. I just wouldn't be able to.
No one comes here because they think they're going to make a lot of money, but there is a limit to what people are willing to do. Our program costs about $25,000, and that's not including the loss of income that our pre-service teachers have because they're not working. But if we continue to have that kind of tuition cost, we already lose out on a whole bunch of people who don't have the ability to pay that.
Beyond just pay, the problem of recruiting and retaining new teachers may have as much to do with the public perception of teaching as anything else.
And I think what has changed more is kind of the public discourse around teaching, around these ideas that there is no support, that it's so hard, that you're evaluated right away, that you have these high-stakes assessments, that you have no flexibility anymore, you just teach what people give you. There's so little curriculum, but so high expectation on test score, and so that makes it really hard for a newer teacher to come in. You're expected to have a little bigger bag of tricks than you already have, and you're new. You don't have it.
It's been very easy to blame teacher preparation and the act of teaching for student failure, when I believe it actually is a host of issues surrounding. There are systemic problems around what is happening in schools, there are systemic poverty issues that are greatly impacting student achievement across the state, and until we kind of own it as a team and a set of partners and provide all of the wraparound resources that we need for students to be successful, it's not a problem we're going to solve just by changing the way we teach teachers to teach, especially if we can't keep them there longer than five years.
With the challenges laid out, educators and experts are implementing changes now to teacher preparation, and looking at more strategies that could impact the future in very positive ways.
People in the K-12 world very much only see teacher preparation as the way that they went through it, regardless of how long ago that was, and what type of experience that they had. And our core group is already out there communicating the things that they have learned about teacher preparation, and that in itself is huge. Our new teachers indicate that they really do need additional mentoring and induction. If clinical experiences are included to a greater degree, let's make sure that they are the right kind of clinical experiences, and not just clocking hours in any school with any kind of teacher and doing-
with any kind of teacher and doing any old thing.
I've heard proposals and ideas and districts trying things where teachers are in the classroom part-time and supporting novices part-time, or the novice teacher is not working a full load, right? But is only working part of the load. And the other part of their work is around learning to teach, around being supported, around getting to know the school and community. There are some ideas and we've been trying them here at MSU around technology also and really having kind of distributed support where cohorts of students, say, leaving here and going into their first years of teaching in lots of geographically dispersed places can still have that community.
We would like to see better quality clinical experiences. We'd like to see greater diversity in those placements so teachers are working with a wider variety of students in K-12 settings. So MDE has developed a plan that addresses recruitment, placement, support, professional learning, and we are aiming strategies at the entire system.
Although novice teachers do encounter many challenges, they also achieve successes worth celebrating, particularly if they receive adequate support and assistance. Of course, the defining feature of a great teacher is passion.
Why I decided to stay here for my first year of teaching is just that camaraderie and knowing that there's people that I can go to and lean on and I can get support from and I know who has my back. As of right now, my long-term plans are really up in the air, but I know for the next two or three years, I plan to be teaching in the classroom. Not perfecting it because I'll probably never be perfect, but just getting to the expert level of classroom management, of teaching the curriculum, and just of being a great teacher.
I think for Ms. Ward, the sky's the limit. A really good characteristic that I talk about when I talk about people and working with them is them being coachable. She's incredibly coachable. If she asks me something and I give her some advice, she takes that advice and she goes with it.
When you see that light bulb go off or when they come to you and say, Ms. Ward, I can read this sentence, or Ms. Ward, I read this book all on my own, it's nothing more rewarding than seeing the students light up and to see them learn. And I don't have any children as of yet, but all of the kids in my class, those are my babies. They are my kids.
My advice to Ms. Ward or new teachers is don't be afraid to ask for help and don't be embarrassed. Build positive relationships. Relationship building is key.
I wanted to become a teacher because I love making things interesting. My goal was to try to bring in everybody and get everybody to feel connected to what was going on in the classroom.
I still learn all the time from Dominic. It helps me stay fresh and it forces me to be more reflective of my own practice. And I think about all the kids that are in his room. They deserve a great teacher and we are so grateful that we have him.
I'm still just in awe every day of the things that I see from the kids that I work with and the colleagues that I have. It's just incredible to be in a place like this. The reason why I keep going is because I feel like I really don't have any bad days here.
Observing him this year has been a breath of fresh air for me. There's something about the environment that he's established, the relationships that he has with the kids. Yeah, I mean, it gives me chills just talking about it. I got choked up last week talking. I mean, that's not normal. Like, to get choked up talking to a first-year teacher during their end-of-the-year evaluation meeting is not the norm. But it's like the level of excitement that he has about this profession and the pride that he has in the profession. If I could bottle it up and pass it out, I would.
When I came in, the first thing Imani and I did was chatted about some things, about the building, about the atmosphere, about the students. I believe I even said to her, I'm here to help you as much as I'm here to get help from you. And from that point, we clicked. So it's without a doubt a two-way street.
I was excited that I would be learning about a new culture because I'm African-American and most of my kids are Hispanic. I was excited that I would be able to teach them the things that my mom taught me and show them the things that my mom showed me. And just expose them to this whole new world and watch them grow. Teaching children how to learn and teaching children to fall in love with learning is, it's so exciting. It's so great. Sorry, I get really excited about teaching. It's so much fun.
What questions do you have? Or reflections?
I guess I'm interested in Vanessa. As good of a job as they could, but they don't have the funds. What would they cut back if they didn't? What are the benefits? I don't know how you persuade that. We're not going to mandate it and I wouldn't want the legislature to try to get them to mandate it, but I think what we can do is these partnerships. Process, so. I'd love to know if that's gone by the wayside in these.
I can say, yeah, thank you. Which is why I was glad that we got to bring it here today. I would say Vanessa's vision is certainly in line with yours. She has us working on right now, developing some tools and supports for our partnership districts in their educator workforce issues along the gamut of staffing, placement, mentoring, induction, recruitment, helping them look at their data, helping them recognize areas for improvement and building those goals into the partnership agreements. Because we recognize that is one of their largest challenges as well and we're systematically visiting to provide kind of personalized support for that.
Classrooms are conducted, but when I see things like competency-based education and when I know that the, you know, they're talked a little bit about high-stakes testing, but I don't know how that all impacts teacher preparation, like evolving wrong directions or. Consequences. I just. Shiny object, you know, new effort that's being introduced and how does that, can't really.
Okay.
The video is true today as it was when I was in the classroom. All these things are very pertinent, very necessary, very important. And so I was excited to see these three teachers being featured. And they talked a lot about what Luke and I talked on the way over here and what he's working with, mentoring, making teachers feel important and feel proud of their profession. And so working with each other is invaluable. Now, one of the things that I have always emphasized in anything that I do is ownership in whatever I'm working with. Everybody has to have ownership. And I saw that, I enumerated many of the things that were highlighted in the video concerning why teachers leave the profession. And so I didn't hear it loud and clear as the profession is not being as respected as it should be by many people. And so teachers get, that's why my philosophy on this board is to always bring the positive things that are happening in the classrooms, because teachers get very demoralized when they hear us talking only about the things that are not happening in the classroom. So these were three great testimonies and it was very well put together. So like Tom, I'm hoping that everybody's doing these kind of things, but you have to remember too, these classrooms, I'm going to say had like 25 students, but some of my colleagues in some schools, because they have big shortages of teachers, they have up to 40 students. So even if they wanted to do some of these things, it's more difficult than having a class time that is manageable. But, you know, it's good to see that somebody is having a good year.
Over the last two or three decades, teaching has moved in the direction of teamwork. You know, the old style was, you know, you put your teacher in the room and then you close the door and then you don't see them until the end of the day and hopefully they survive. And that kind of atomistic approach is very hard and it makes for discontinuity. So I think these are very healthy developments. I observed that students learn from how adults interact with each other. So when an adult is willing to ask for help, when an adult respects another adult, I think this is all important modeling for students. And that was, I think some of that was exhibited here. So these are all very positive developments. The school culture begins with, I think, the relationships cultivated by the, relationships and attitudes cultivated by the adults, the professionals there. And the chief responsibility lies with your administrator. When your math teacher, you want the math teacher to raise math scores, well, it's going to ask the kids to work harder and so you got to, pretty soon you got to, and you ask the teachers to work harder. So pretty soon you got parents and teachers are complaining that, you know, the teachers make us work too hard. The principal may be the only one who sees and knows that the teacher's doing the right thing. And that feedback is essential. And if we can do the same, and I see what's happening in the movie is feedback from colleagues, which is doubly, which maximizes the impact and promotes the values that the institution exists for.
Okay, well, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Hold on. Luke and then Eileen.
Okay, so at my high school, East Kentwood High School, three years ago, we recognized that new teachers needed this sort of support. And so a colleague and I started a new teacher support program three years ago. And we're now in our third year and we actually have 33 teachers now that are involved in this Rising Teacher Leader Program that we've created. And we've really created a support system for these new teachers, connected them to experienced teachers, provided them with one-on-one coaching, teachers getting into other teachers' classrooms to give them feedback, all of this stuff that you're talking about. And so I've done a lot of thinking around this new teacher support. And in my role as Michigan Teacher of the Year, I've had the opportunity to be all around the state in different schools. And the reality of it is, is that this idea of mentoring is in a totally different spot depending on what school you go to. Like literally from nothing to like huge support programs like you're seeing here on the screen. And I think that the reason why you see such a variability in this is that it is a mandate from the MDE, the State of Michigan, that each new teacher is assigned a mentor. That's a mandate. Beyond that, there is no expectation. In addition, there is no funds provided for that. So it is each individual's district's decision about how they're going to do that. And so some districts are just putting a name down next to the new teacher's name to say, yes, we have complied and we have a mentor for each one of our new teachers. While other schools, like you're seeing here, are building like comprehensive support systems for their new teachers. So if we believe that mentoring really can have a positive impact on this, on this improving the quality of new teachers and retention of teachers, then there has to be money for it. There has to be funding provided for districts to be able to use that. And certainly districts can decide how they're going to use that and they can build their own programs or whatever, but currently it's an unfunded mandate. And that's why you're seeing such variability when you go from one school to the next.
Well, that's a little bit like saying that requiring vegetables in the school lunch is an unfunded mandate. You don't have to provide a vegetable fund to require the school lunch include vegetables. If this is an effective procedure that promotes student learning, then the local district needs to own that rather than depend on special earmarked funds or whatever, which is not to say that we can't do some good with grants or things of that nature, but I think the principle has to be affirmed, that the local district is responsible for using these best practices and benefiting the student. And not put it back on, oh, the legislature didn't provide an earmarked fund. I just think that's an irresponsible way to proceed.
And I agree with you, but I think the reality of it is, is that that means that some schools will do it well and some won't. And what about those students and those new teachers in those districts that don't?
Eileen?
I just wanted to say that this was a priority for the commission too, for the 21st Century Life Commission. Not only because a number of districts don't do it well, but a number of districts don't do it at all. And the tragedy of all of this is not honoring the commitment people make to try to become a teacher with good professional learning and making sure that they have what they need, especially as they start the profession. We just, to send somebody to Ed School and then see them drop out within five years is difficult for them and difficult for anybody in the profession to watch.
Thank you. So are there any other comments or questions? So I want to thank Rich Hamburg and Jennifer Lewis for coming out and joining us today and for putting this video together and Leah as well. I think it was, it's very educational, very informative, and a nice inside glimpse of what's happening inside the classroom and the school. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. So it's now 11:25. We have two additional agenda items for the morning session, but I know we have an outside speaker who is here for item number D. So I'm wondering if the board would like to move item C to the afternoon so that we can have our speaker from the EPA start on time? Any other thoughts?
Because I want to give the outside speaker as much time as we can.
Does that work for you as well? For both of you? Is that okay with you? Okay. So we're in agreement?
Yeah.
Great. So we're going to move on. We're going to, the presentation on partnership districts will move to the afternoon. And the next item then on the committee of the whole agenda is a presentation on environmental impacts on students in schools. This presentation focuses on promoting children's environmental health in Michigan schools. I would like to welcome Dr. Maryann Sero?
Swero.
Swero. Thank you. Environmental health scientist from the Children's Health Program Manager at the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Region 5. And she's here to share some basic concepts regarding children's environmental health. So please welcome Dr. Maryann Swero. Swero?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And please.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me be here with you. I wish it weren't this icy today, though. So. I'm going to talk a little bit about some basic concepts in children's environmental health, then I'm going to talk a little bit more about why we need to focus on making children's environments in schools healthier and safer. And then I'm going to share a few resources with you about that. What you have handed out are, so it's a tri-fold. If you look at it, on one side, it's programs that are more general relating to school indoor environmental quality, so all kinds of indoor environmental issues. And if you look on the other side, it's the issues related to specifically indoor air quality, which a lot of us think more about when we think about indoor environmental quality. And so my contact is on one side and my indoor air quality contact is on the other side. And the other resource, I'll talk about a little bit more. So just as a background, we all kind of understand intuitively what risk is. When we put ourselves in a position to do, to say, for example, we're looking at crossing a four-lane highway, if we're not crossing at the crosswalk where there's a light, that crosswalk can be a hazard for us. That's the, that represents toxicity. That's the tox, that represents toxicity. That's the fundamental element or the qual, quality of the substance we come in contact with. The exposure is the more important piece, I think, because it's, it's putting ourselves, using that analogy for the, the four-lane highway, it's our, putting ourselves on that highway, walking into it. So if we, if we have a chemical that has a lot of toxicity, but we have no exposure to it, we don't have any risk. So we can always reduce exposure, I mean, excuse me, reduce risk by reducing exposure. One of the things that's a big unknown for, for many chemicals is the toxicity. We know very little about the almost 80,000 chemicals that are in, in use in our commercial world. And we know very little about the toxicity of, for children, probably for only a couple of dozen. So we always assume that the toxicity is greater in children, but we always know that when we, we, when we reduce their exposures, we reduce their risk. Another thing we're learning more about is when those exposures take place are really important. Not all exposures to, to us are the same. It depends on what's going on in, in our bodies at that time. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, but for those of you who are more mathematically inclined, risk is a function of hazard and exposure and timing and susceptibility. So children aren't little adults. They have a lot of things going on in their bodies. There's a, there are periods of rapid growth and development and you can think of those more like very well-choreographed dances or ballets. If you knock somebody off their position, they're not likely to recover. And that's what happens when those exposures take place when children are young. Or when they're growing, going through other kinds of, of growth and development like the prepubescent period and then the pubescence. They also have differences in how their bodies work. They're not fully grown, so their bodies do not know how to handle chemical exposures the way ours do. Our systems are more mature. When we see a chemical that, whether it's a medicinal agent or whether it's an environmental exposure, our body looks at that chemical, says, hey, you don't belong here, let's get you out of here quickly. Children's bodies don't work that way and so their, their systems are either working at a slower pace or they're not present at all. They also have different behaviors than we do that give them higher exposures. Again, higher exposures means increased risk. So they're putting their hands on stuff all the time, they're putting their hands in their mouth, they're picking up the thing off the floor and putting it in their mouth, the pencil, they're chewing on it when they're nervous. So we think about those kinds of exposures and those are exposures that we don't have. So we need to make sure that we're reducing those exposures. And just as, as a side thought here, biologically, humans are not adults until they're about age 25. So this doesn't just refer to the little tiny ones crawling on the floor, but this also includes our, our high school students as well. Everything that a children comes in contact with is their environment, just as ours. Everything we eat, drink, breathe and touch. And we always want to make sure that we're thinking about the fetus and utero as the most sensitive of those environments. Everything the mom is exposed to, so thinking about pregnant teachers, for example, that the baby will also, the fetus will also come in contact with. We used to think the placenta was a, very much like a barrier between what the child and, and the, the mom were coming in contact with, but for many chemicals, we know that that placenta is much more like a highway inviting those chemicals across. Lead is one of those. We know children spend a whole lot of their time indoors, just like most of the rest of us, but their indoor environment is primarily maybe up to about a third of the time that they spend in schools and also childcare. So we think about the kids in before care and after care. So school environments are extremely important. We also know that, that school facilities affect academic outcomes. There's been studies over many years and I'm going to just touch on a couple of them to just give a really brief background. But think about yourselves. If you're in a stuffy room, if there's noise, if there's, if there's a lot of dirt around, it's really hard to concentrate and it doesn't change for kids. Indoor environmental quality factors are related to human performance. When we have problems with temperature or lighting or indoor air quality or whether or not we can control what, what we're, the environment we're in, which is the situation kids happen to be in, or noise, those all affect the, our productivity and the same thing is true for children. This is looking at a group of studies, a meta-analysis of studies that were done by, that was looked at by Carnegie Mellon a number of years ago. But as you look at the, the Y-axis, the vertical axis, that's a reduction or percent improvement in symptoms. So whatever things were thrown at them, I can't see myself here, whether we increased outdoor air or whether we controlled moisture or whether we controlled pollutant sources, all of those multiple studies demonstrated that we have decreased symptoms and improved, improved environments, improved responses. This is really true too for kids with asthma. We also have studied over time that schools without a major maintenance backlog have a much better functioning school. They have a higher daily attendance, four to five students per thousand, which in the long run means higher money coming into the schools. And they also have a lower annual dropout rate of between 10 and 13 students per thousand. And again, this manifests itself in the improved socioeconomic status of the community where the school is found. We, we recognize that small investments can address critical environmental issues and they help schools to save money, sort of like the, the thinking ahead, doing the preventive maintenance, reducing the, the problems later on down from things that they might have to clean up or remediate, where schools are stuck in places where they're, you know, they're getting a lot of bad press, where they have legal fees because there are now suits against the school and also potential loss of trust in the community. Those same small investments can pay back in improved test scores. They can prove, improve, they can result in improved high school graduation rates, which then boosts the earning potential of the community. They can also decrease energy costs when those energy upgrades are done correctly. When they're not done correctly, they can cause a lot more problems for the, the indoor environment. And they could also, again, looking at the larger community, they could also end up in reduced healthcare costs, especially related to asthma. We know that a lot of kids in schools, sometimes in some communities, we have as many as one-third of the kids having asthma in the classroom. This is a whole laundry list of all the sorts of, kinds of issues in learning environments. And it can be overwhelming if we think about it, but the thing about it is that they are all connected. Many of them have, have contributions from the same sorts of issues and can be, and can be addressed by the same sorts of, of operating and management practices. When we have, the reason why we have some of these problems is because there's a lack of awareness or a lack of perspective of the issues. There are also, we know lots of, of places that have problems with money. And one of the first things that happens, and we've seen this and, and one of the school board administrator organizations has documented this, that when, when the, when school funding gets cut, one of the first things that gets cut is, is reduced preventive maintenance, reduced maintenance. We end up with outsourcing, which then potentially can, if not, if not done right, can also lead to poorer environments. People kind of, schools kind of saying, okay, we're going to get these books this year and we're going to not fix that hole in the roof this year. Sort of having to make the hard choices. We know that there are vulnerable populations in schools, the children being the most vulnerable among us. We also know that there are high population density in schools. Kids put off more metabolic byproducts than adults. And so if we think about a classroom space, we might have only eight adults in that if it were an office space, but now we've got 30, 35 kids in that space. There's also no centralized authority or guidelines. Some federal guidelines exist, some state guidelines, some local, but there's nothing that addresses all of the issues together. And we also know that there are lots and lots of hazardous chemicals, especially curriculum-related chemicals. That's one of the areas that I focus on most specifically, related to chemical management in the science curriculum. We've gone into schools over the last 10 years and there are chemicals in, in classrooms right now that would lead to schools need, you know, being, just blowing up. Schools having the situation on hand, if, if two chemicals that were sitting next to each other accidentally fell off the shelf, we could have a gas chamber for 500 kids in that school. Scary, scary things because it's not paid attention to because there, there hasn't been enough interest or in, or focus and awareness of the issues. We know that there's only a handful of things that really, really affect the indoor environments. Moisture, mishandling of chemicals, sometimes it's the building materials of concern, thinking about things like asbestos, thinking about lead, PCBs. There's maintenance issues, there are potentially odors from classrooms, there are occupant influences. We bring things into classrooms, students bring things in, plus we're all breathing and putting off all these metabolic byproducts. And then schools are in the communities where they are, so sometimes we also have impacts from outside the classroom. So these are all the kinds of things that can, can impact the environment indoors. And basically, we want to do the primary prevention approaches. This is the public health way. We can avoid these hazards through good maintenance based on common sense principles, like making sure we have, we have good ventilation, making sure we're controlling moisture and reducing water damage. We probably in our own homes would think if we had this leak, we would fix the leak. But in schools I've been in, I, I serve the whole Midwest, sometimes those, the, what ends up happening is the tiles, the ceiling tiles get replaced because, oh gosh, we have water damage here, not thinking about, oh, where's that water coming from? Sometimes it's a simple fix, but, but it's not an intuitive one all the time. Making sure that ventilation, combustion appliances are vented properly. Excuse me. Probably saw last year, there were schools in, in the Atlanta area that had to close down because they had carbon monoxide leaks. Following basic safeguards to avoid exposure to toxics. And education of the occupants, that's one of the most important. Schools tend to be very hierarchical, so we have administrative, we have teachers, we have other, other, you know, parents and other folks. We have the school facility people and they don't always communicate across those silos. The best schools I've been in always have good communication across those silos. And then we always have, in the background, we always have these things going on about injury prevention. It would be a simple thing to sort of roll these things all together. This is just, this slide is kind of a web of, if you remember, I said a lot of these issues were related to each other, so just think about one issue, moisture coming into a building. We know moisture can lead to mold, we know that mold can cause problems for kids with allergies and asthma. We know that the moisture can also lead to structural damage. Where there was no access for rodents or for other pests to come in, because of the structural damage now, we've, we've sort of invited them to come and sit with us. When people see those pests, what's the first thing they want to do? They want to grab a can of something and spray it. So now we've introduced pesticides into the environment as well. We can also lead more, lead to more, by getting this moisture intrusion, excuse me, the surfaces that contained lead potentially, because we know there are painted surfaces in schools, any schools built before 1978 probably still have some lead paint in them. But if they're in good shape, then it's not a problem. But if we start to get this moisture intrusion, it can break down and deteriorate that paint and cause a lead hazard. So again, it's not one issue, it's many issues. So we, we face this through these, we address these through holistic approaches to creating healthier school environments. Primary prevention, looking at a, using an environmental management system approach, which is similar to what industry does. It's kind of putting a, an environmental perspective on all the things that we are, we are doing. We know that schools have huge other business going on, but by having an environmental policy, it means that when they do consider something, doing, making some changes, we're going to do some renovation or we're going to change the flow of the movement of the cars and where they're parking or something. It's about how is this going to affect our indoor air quality? How's this going to affect our other indoor environmental quality? Those can lead to healthier school environments, just thinking about those in advance and healthier, more productive students and staff. So this outance of prevention approach, this environmental management system, is a stepwise approach to help school environments address issues in a comprehensive way. Again, really important to address, to have a, a policy. Let's put a policy in place. Let's do some periodic assessment. Excuse me. Let's do some training, improving the competencies of the people we need to. Let's improve communications. Communications, again, are really key. Let's use or exist, use or modify existing tools and build on existing efforts. If we already have some sort of response for an environment or, excuse me, for an emergency system, let's build into, or build onto that and look at the way we treat environmental issues as well. It's not about starting from, from the beginning. And I kind of keep this picture here because I think it's more about baby steps, taking one step at a time, not trying to do everything all at once. The basic element of a state environmental health program for schools, which we have, you have a copy of the, the link where you can find, these all come from tried and true methods that were practiced by some of the states across the country. We checked in with them and then we actually were lucky enough to be able to provide some grant funding for five states. It was a national competition. And of the five states, three are in the Midwest. We have Minnesota, Wisconsin and Ohio. They all went about it in very different ways, but these are sort of the underlying methods and tools and approaches. So develop some, some, actually going back and looking for what existing policies we have or sometimes standards that can help establish a robust school environmental health program. I looked at the, I look at websites all the time for state programs. It's really hard to find things all in one place. So if you want to look for integrated pest management, you have to kind of know what you're looking for. If you want to look for indoor air quality or asthma, it, some of that information's already there, but unless you're really focused on finding it or really know how to find it, you're not necessarily going to find it. So sometimes it's about pulling them all together under one, one portal. And then considering additional opportunities through the development of additional statewide policies, looking at, at gaps that may exist. Then using guidance and technical assistance and tools, providing those to, to the intermediate school districts, the RISAs, to the school districts, to the individual schools, then providing resources to them, like training opportunities, educational and promotional materials, providing a somewhat of a centralized way to communicate or provide outreach about the, the programs and especially the resources that are available. And then coordinating with emergency management folks too, because I think there is a natural fit and there's a, a structure that can be used sometimes to provide that information to folks through, through the existing networks. So here's more about the resources. One of the things that came out of the, the grants with the states was the development of a model school environmental health program. It would be great to provide this kind of information to school districts or schools across Michigan. They're not, again, they focus on, on the common sense prevention approaches. This is another resource. What I like about this, sensible steps to healthier school environments, there's a really simple assessment tool. And remember, periodic assessment is one of those things. If we don't know what problems we have, we don't know what we need to work on to fix. And we don't know how, what to celebrate our successes on either. This is the inside page, these are all the indoor air quality tools that we have available. There are a lot of materials that are already created. There are master classes, there are webinar series, there are coaching situations. So lots of tools and lots of abilities for schools to get involved and to work to build their indoor air quality promotion in the schools. This is when, you know, a lot of times schools need to, to make some renovation. Having a look at this, maybe 10 or Having a look at this, maybe 10 or, it's more like 15 or 18-page booklet, helps schools to realize that there are some things that they can be doing to, to make the school renovations healthier and safer in the long run, during the construction phase as well as post-construction. And if, if the district is lucky enough to be building new schools, also same, same kind of situation where we take on, we take a look at this, it's a little bit bigger document, but looking at this document to help schools in the planning phase, build new schools, put them in the right place, maybe emphasizing the smart growth kinds of principles, or utilizing better public transit access and things like that, or, or multi-use for buildings. Those are all addressed here. So that's my spiel on school environmental health, and I said you have this other brochure that I gave you with the, the pink color on it or something, and this is another resource that I want to point out. Not only are they there for, they're available for school environmental health issues, but for all environmental health issues related to children. They serve the Midwest, they serve Illinois, Indiana, Ohio, Michigan, Minnesota, Wisconsin. They are part of this national network that are funded by us at EPA, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, as, as well as our sister federal agency, the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry. And what they do is they serve as a regional resource, generally by telephone, to evaluate, treat, and prevent environmental illness in kids, to train pediatricians and others, including educational professionals, in environmental health issues, and to promote children's environmental health in communities. So they're there by phone, they can do, they have the ability to do long-distance learning opportunities, to, to provide those, but they can also be coaxed to come and make a trip out. But they also are there for the hard questions that you might get sometimes from your constituents, asking, you know, hey, my kid goes to XYZ school, and I think that this school environment is having a problem, is causing a problem for my child's asthma. And, and one of the resources you can send them to is this resource. So again, something that you can use, you can also give this information to schools to, to use, to parents, to local health departments, to, you yourselves can use it. So thank you very much, and I would appreciate it if you have any questions for me, I will be happy to answer them. But I also invite you to feel free to contact me for more information, or to suggest ways we might be able to partner in activities that will have a positive impact on children's health. As long as I'm in my job, I am available to, to do training. Several years ago, we did some training through the, on chemical management in Michigan. We did it in the Grand Rapids area and Kalamazoo, in, in Battle Creek, and we also did it in Detroit. We, along with the instructional materials that we provided to the teachers, a one-day training with, in Battle Creek with actually a hands-on experience for them, we also were able to do some collection of chemicals, the outdated, extremely hazardous chemicals that schools don't need to have. And we don't have those kind of funds to do the, the chemical collections anymore, but we would certainly be willing to do some of the training. We've trained facilities managers, we've trained chemical, the science curriculum teachers, we've trained administrators, we've trained some of the teachers unions even. So again, we would be happy to, to work with you in other ways that, that might be useful.
Cam, did you want to have any comments?
Sure, I see Tom has tons of notes.
No, no, go ahead.
I just thought since you, you invited the speaker today that you might want to add a few thoughts.
Sure. Thank you, Mary Ann, for, for making it, and we didn't know if you were going to be able to come or not, so it's good that they let you free to come and visit with us. And so I was happy to see the school citing piece that you had towards the end, because we know that a lot of times our schools, and particularly in our urban environments and some of our rural environments as well, that the existing schools are cited in areas where there are air, are air pollutants coming indoors that, that impact. So from a policy side, those are some things that, that we would like to, to be able to address, and thinking about how we, how we move forward, and so we've taught, you know, you and I have talked about some of those things. And then obviously, you know, with the drinking water, which is where we've been introduced, and the lead in drinking water. And so actually, last week, I was supposed to be there as a health professional, but also as a school board member, be in Washington DC, where Pew Charitable Trust was looking at, at lead in drinking water. But fortunately, we had news in, in Flint that the governor had worked with Brian, and thanks to the board, the work that was done here, as well as the local community there in Flint, but looking at how do we make Flint a, a model community around drinking water and, and building a policy or protocols, and putting those protocols in place. The state board here recently put forward a statement on testing, monitoring, and maintenance around water, drinking water and water systems. So getting some thoughts from you on that. I know that you've helped us with some guidance, but one of the pieces that we know with school districts is, is in addition to the guidance and the education, there is obviously this resource issue, and how do we put forward policy that doesn't put yet another burden on the schools? And then something that they're, I mean, obviously, school districts, all the, the school districts that I talk to, they want to provide safe environments for students, but at the same time, I mean, they've got to be thinking about educator, prepare, or, you know, mentoring and all of these other things. So just getting your thoughts on, on some of those issues, and I know we will continue those discussions at this table, and hopefully you'll be able to be a part of those, but just getting your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really important, in terms of the, the resources, I, I think one of the, the most important things that we can think about is, is how we, you know, a lot of times what we, what we do is we kind of put a, I'm into these stove pipes. So here's our educational stove pipe, here's our health stove pipe, here's our criminal justice stove pipe, and we don't think about the bottom line across all of them. And that's where we start to, have to start thinking about it. We can't start thinking about, here's what we're giving to schools, and they've got to make do with what they've got to do, and then we're going to, because we have ultimately kids who are impacted in this, and this stove pipe get out in these other stove pipes, and they can't contribute maybe as well as they might. So we have to start thinking about those, those bottom lines in, in a more holistic way as well, and I think that's, that's really key. When we think about exposures, just sort of on the environmental side, the, the most important years for the exposures are the early childhood exposures. When we think about all of the health down the road, when, when we get into our 30s, 40s, 70s, 90s, that health is started, the, the way, the way our health is in those later years starts off in early childhood. It's called the, the fetal origins of adult health, or the early, early, early impacts on adult health, but we know that health starts, we, we set the stage for health in early life. And if we don't protect those, that early life, what we end up doing is creating the systems where, again, looking at these other stove pipes, where now we're paying for the, the other kinds of health that comes down, even things like diabetes. You know, we know that there's a lot of chemical environmental exposures that are related to diabetes. We know that even obesity, not, not, not the obesity here, but, you know, when we have people who are a few pounds more than they should be, that's also related to the, the environmental impacts. I have a really great slide that shows two, two mice exposed to, to, you know, they have the same, same heritage, they had the same, they were fed the same food, the same water, got the same amount of exercise. The only thing is that one was exposed to some of the chemical plasticizers in their water, and when you look at the two of them side by side, one is normal weight, one is like four times its normal size. So, you know, that's the only thing that was different about those two. So we have to start thinking this holistic way, and, and I'm just really passionate about protecting kids' health, and I think schools, because we, we mandate that they be there, I think it's really important that we protect them to the best extent that we can, and protecting them starts with increasing awareness. I think most people, when they understand the connections, will want to do the right thing, and they'll figure out a way collaboratively to do that right thing. And it may not be the same for every place. Every school district, every community has to figure it out on its own, I think. There are some tools and resources that can help. A lot of times, the, the best thing we've, that I have run into is, is somebody who gets it, who's a champion for children's environmental health in that, in that location.
I, thank you for coming. I guess I just was wondering, you know, this, this major issues in learning environments is a large list.
Yes.
You know, I, I would say that it would probably cost a lot of money for a school or a district to test all of these all the time. Is there a hierarchy of, you know, if, if they, if they should, you know, you said frequency, or I can't remember, the risk, there was two things, the toxic and the...
And the exposure.
Exposure. So I mean, is there more likelihood of exposure in some of these where that can be a focus or, you know, because I also know, it seems to me that the incentives are wrong. You know, it would be costly if a district or a school discovers a lot of things, the more things they find, the more people are going to have to lay off to deal with these issues. Now that's not a very good, you know, I hope that that doesn't happen, but I just look at incentives in, in government, and incentive in oftentimes would be not to discover things, because then you have to deal with it, and then you have to move money around, lay people off, do things that may be, you know, short-term difficult. So, questions, one, is there a hierarchy here that we should add, and two, I don't know what you can do about the incentive question, I guess I was just looking more at, is there five or six, or do you, not, not that you give them now, but I mean, is that something that we can look at as far as what's more prevalent typically, that we should be maybe almost requiring or asking the legislature to require some of the testing, or at least advising locals that these are the big ones?
So I would, I would go back to this slide up here, and, and not address things on a issue-by-issue basis, but I would think about them, first of all, by looking for things, we end up not having to react, react to things. I think when we get into crisis management, that's where we end up having the problems, where we have to spend a lot of money. But if we put in practice something that addresses better moisture intrusion, addressing that, miss, chemical mishandling, when we think about maintenance issues, when we address those kinds of things, we will get half a dozen of these right off the bat, these chem, these, oops, where'd my, where'd my list go? We'll, we'll take care of things like the PCBs. We'll take care of the, to a great extent, we'll take care of the indoor air quality and ventilation, because we'll be changing out filters on a regular basis. We'll be making sure that we're bringing in fresh air and, and, and reducing the exposures indoor. We'll, just by making sure we have a chemicals policy in place, we won't have mercury, and we know schools are not supposed to have mercury, but they do anyway. I, I can go in any school and find mercury. When we have better, better management practices, we'll have less use of pesticides because we'll have less need for them, we'll have less pests coming in. So I, I think when we, it's a, it's a focus on, on the approach rather than the individual issues. And when I talk about doing an assessment, I don't mean going and getting a, a company to come in and measuring mold in our schools, because I don't believe that's appropriate. It's more about looking at schools in a, in this way that kind of addresses all, many issues in, through these practices of, let's see if we can get this one up here. So, so looking at, at effective cleaning and maintenance, preventing mold and moisture, reducing environmental contamination, making sure we have good ventilation, and making sure we're, we're following pest management practices and protocols, which, you know, schools are supposed to be using integrated pest, pest management, but are they? So it's about, again, using this approach as opposed to looking at measuring things and then reacting to those.
One last question on the toxicity. If something is toxic, is that debatable, or is, is it an exact science that on all these different things, part per million is toxic, and then if you drop it one step below, then it's non, no longer toxic? Or, you know, we had a, a statement that said, you know, this level, you know, this level of lead is okay, but it, you know, or, you know, so is there, are there levels that are okay? And if, if so, is that a debatable, or is everybody agree that it's, that's the number?
So some chemicals have a threshold below which there's, there is no, there's no impact on health. Chemicals like lead, however, have no threshold. We can, we, any amount of lead is, is harmful. It's, it's a matter of looking at the harm, do we see it as, in a clinical harm to an individual child, or do we see it to a, as a societal harm to a community of children?
Costs prohibitive to try to get it to, get things to zero? I mean, you know, is there a, a level that says, zero would cost way too much, we wouldn't be able to educate kids if we, if that was our focus? So this smaller amount of whether it's lead or whatever is...
So we're going to always come, we're always going to have exposures, right? They're never going to go away. What we want to do is we want to minimize those exposures, and we want to focus on minimizing exposures for the most, most susceptible. You know, schools are maybe a third of this child, of the child's environment, but, you know, they have environment, the other environments that they spend time in too, right? So we have to, we have to balance, I understand that, and I understand that we have, we don't have unlimited funds. We also don't know everything, so what we want to do is sort of be prudently precautionary.
I just wanted to say something too. You all have some really good checklists for some of those things, to Tom's first question. I don't know if they're still on that site, but they were on the school environment, so you're not sampling, like you said, you're not taking, drawing actual samples that you're analyzing. There's some really good checklists.
There's a really good one here on, in the back of this booklet, and then if you look at some of these indoor air quality tools for schools, tools, they're also, those are, those are, this is more for a district level, I would say, this is more for a school level, school by school level. That upper left-hand corner one has checklists for individual classroom teachers, because there, there are practices that teachers are doing, there, you know, those, those unit ventilators on the sides of the, of the rooms, they, they might store books on top of it, and that means that the air that's supposed to be coming out isn't coming out, and that's underlying problems with communication. They also might be storing plants, and then when they water the plants, the water falls down inside, we end up with mold growing in there, and then it comes blowing out at us. So, you know, there are things that a lot of, we, we focus mostly on the no-cost, low-cost things that reduce the exposures, and that, I think those are the best kinds of things. But it takes, it takes vision, and it takes a champion.
And I think it also takes, to your second question, you know, I, there's not, I don't hear that much argument over the fact that lead, there's no level of lead that should, is, is, should be in a system, a biological system. But it's just, as you said, are you going to deal with it here? And yes, it might be costly, are you going to deal with it with, through healthcare costs or through the, the justice system? So, I mean, it's, it's, are we going to be forward-thinking and try to do everything that we can, or are we just going to deal with it on, on the other end of these systems?
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for coming out today, we really appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
And with that, we are going to break for lunch. We'll be back in this room at 1:00, and we'll start with public. We'll be back in this room at 1:00, and we'll start with public comment. Again, if you want to provide public comment, there are forms available on the table outside. Please get the form in before we start public comment period, and we'll see you at 1:00 PM.
I forgot, I know your birthday was this month, why don't you come?
Where in the sequence?
Well, right after.
Yours is the 28th.